We will now call the city council meeting of Monday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. I'd like to explain the disaster procedures. If we would have a tornado, we would go to the basement, the area where you pay your sewer bills, and right across from there is the stairway down to the basement. And if it would be a fire, if there would be a fire, we would go directly outside here in an orderly fashion. So, since these meetings are being videotaped, it's important that everyone speak directly into the microphone when speaking. So let's start with the roll call of alderpersons. Jenny?
Alderperson Whitaker.
Here.
Alderperson Schneider.
Here.
Alderperson Duco.
Here.
Alderperson Eris.
Here.
Alderperson Randall.
Here.
Alderperson Ferguson.
Here.
Alderperson Anthony.
Here.
Alderperson Ovian.
Here.
Alderperson Dillman.
Here.
Alderperson Schaefer.
Here.
Alderperson Steele.
Here.
Alderperson Rothweiler.
Here.
Alderperson Elmore.
Here.
Alderperson Weigant.
Here.
Alderperson Sullivan.
Here.
Alderperson Ostoff.
Here.
Everyone's present mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Bierman.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
President.
Police Chief Icecan.
Here.
Fire Chief Mills.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitreit. Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Waste Water Randy Smith.
Here.
Director of Library Lee Spearman.
Here.
Interim Director of IT Ty Buckner. City Engineer Scott Sager.
Here.
Director of Health Housing Building Scott Tyler. Director of Economic Development Planning Zoning Cliff Cross.
President.
Director of Public Relations Communications Marketing Kathy Kaiser. Director of Human Resources Bill Clay.
President.
Director of Maintenance Mike Schaefer.
Here.
Director of Recreation Don La Chance.
Here.
Mayor, Jamie, Scott Tyler, and Kathy are excused.
Okay, thank you so much. And now I'd like to recognize the Church of Christ Scout troop number nine. Will you all please come forward to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Yep, turn around. We want to turn this way.
We're ready when you guys are. Go ahead and start.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Please stay right where you are, gentlemen. And I will come down. I'd like for you to introduce yourselves to, and ladies also, thank you so much.
So, can you face the audience? And could you just tell us your name and age?
My name is Aiden. And I'm fifteen. I'm a ten. And I am thirteen.
My name is Aiden and I'm sixteen.
My name is Chris and I'm fourteen.
My name is Thomas and I'm fifteen.
My name is Timothy and I'm fifteen.
My name is Chance and I'm fourteen.
My name is Lucas and I'm thirteen.
My name is Allison and I'm twelve.
Well, thank you all so much for being here tonight and leading us in the pledge and being fine examples of good citizens. We certainly appreciate it and we wish you all a happy Thanksgiving holiday. And thank you to the scout masters that work with all the students and everybody involved in your troop. So you may go on back. Thank you so much.
Good job.
Thanks, guys.
At this time, we have public participation. I'd like to remind everyone, it's two to three minutes. And if you are here tonight for public participation, please remember to come forward, state your name and your address, and tell us what is on your mind. Okay, is there anyone here for public participation? Okay, Mr. Enyard?
My name is Phil Enyard. I live at three oh one Aben Street here in Belleville. Madam Mayor, council members, I speak in opposition to items eleven A one and eleven B one. Eleven A one requests approval of a revised request for proposal agreement with a closing date of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. As you all, I'm sure, well remember, several of my neighbors and the developer Kathy Mordini have appeared before you multiple times regarding her previous proposals for the city-owned building at one twenty-three, one twenty-seven Mascuta. We believe her latest request should be denied. Number one, she materially breached her contract with the city when she failed to appear at the October closing date for the property and failed to request an extension to the contract prior to the contracted foreclosing date. A material breach is one that terminates the contract. Two, Ms. Mordini has never had any earnest money deposit on this property. She has requested multiple extensions, yet has no money at stake. Number three, Ms. Mordini, over the past nearly three years, has changed the nature and the scope of the project multiple times. By so doing, she has canceled any claim she may have as to her application having a grandfather status, allowing her to evade the council's clearly stated goal of limiting the number of venue establishments in a neighborhood. Ms. Mordini's proposal would be the sixth venue establishment within a half-mile radius. The ordinance prohibits more than one within a mile. Number four, Ms. Mordini has made multiple promises to obey ordinances and perform the contract terms with the city. However, her credibility is questionable. Public court records show that she has been sued for breach of contract at least four times in St. Clair County Circuit Court. She has multiple city offenses for accumulation of trash, failure to make required repairs, and health and safety violations. She has also had two domestic violence protection orders and one non-stalking order entered against her to protect fellow business persons and neighbors from her actions. On October twelfth, she distributed a letter and a packet to the neighborhood, which has been repudiated by one of the families she claims supports her project. I have here the documents in proof, as well as both of our aldermen, our ward have. All of these adversely reflect on her credibility. In eleven B one, she asks for an outdoor dining and drinking permit. I just ask you to ask yourselves, do you want this in your neighborhood, particularly in light of the above facts regarding her reliability? Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for public participation?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and audience. My name is Catherine Crer. I'm formerly an alderman in the Eighth Ward. And I'm here today on behalf of the Salvation Army of St. Clair County. I've been a board member of those for fifteen years and would like to let you all know that we have the Red Kettle Campaign that has begun this past week. And I wanted to tell you a few things about the Salvation Army that so many people don't know. Salvation Army runs kind of below the radar. They provide free meals a week, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, from eleven until noon for anybody who wants to come for a free meal. They also provide, they are the people that provide the assistance with the Illinois American Water Company for people who are behind in their water bills. They provide that assistance through the water company. They also provide a mentoring program to help people to become self-sufficient people, a number of other aspects. But what I'm here today is over the campaign, with the Red Kettle Campaign. All of you have seen the Red Kettles out there. I'd like to, first of all, ask you to please donate to them. They have one of the highest percentages of monies being given to the, to causes. And a special request, they have a new process this year. If you would like to sponsor a kettle, for those of you who are business employees, you may sponsor a kettle for one day, for a hundred dollars, a week for five hundred dollars, or throughout the season. This allows you to provide your name, your business, on the kettle that is being rung, whether it's in, whether it's at the Macy's Store, or whether it's at Schnucks, or Walmart, or whatever. You may have the choice to choose your location and your date. I have forms here. I'd like to specifically request, since I was a member of the city council, I'd like to, to offer a challenge to the police and the fire departments, which I was a member of that committee. I'd like for you to consider having a ring-off. As you all know, on Friday, the St. Louis people have the guns and hoses, where the police and the fire department will have fights for the benefit of the backstabbers. Salvation Army would like to encourage you to participate in a ring-off. You can choose your date, you can choose your venue, and whoever comes out earning the most amount of money has the bragging rights for that season. I have the application forms here, so if anyone would like to, to speak with me during or after the meeting, I'd be more than happy. And in the meantime, please consider donating to Salvation Army. They certainly have the best interest of the community at heart, and they do the best that they can with limited amounts of funds that they have. Thank you, Mayor and city council, for your time.
Thank you, Catherine. We certainly appreciate the information, and hopefully people will take you up on that. Okay, any more response from public participation? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Curtis. I reside at seven twenty-eight Goss Avenue. And I am speaking on behalf of the neighborhood against special use variance forty-nine and use variance application fifty-five. We spoke, there was a group of about four of us that spoke to different neighbors and wanted their opinion on the building of a metal storage unit on the field. And we put together a petition. We've got some signatures. If I could present this to you.
Okay, we will put that into record.
And then after speaking with all of the neighbors, we put together everyone's concerns and thoughts on that issue. I put together a longer petition. I'm sorry, there's one more thing. It's here. A lot of people were elderly, or a lot of people worked, so they weren't able to come up here. So we put the petition together so that we could address everyone's concerns and questions. If I could read some of it until my time is up, somebody else from the neighborhood would be able to pick up where I left off is something that we would ask.
Proceed.
I also have copies for all of the aldermen and the board, if you would like to follow along. There should be sufficient. We, the undersigned residents of property near Goss Avenue, Belleville, Illinois, St. Clair County, hereby object to the special use permit application forty-nine and use variance application fifty-five for the following reasons. First, we wish to thank the mayor and city council for their service and attention. We also want to state that we did have representatives at the zoning board meeting back in October, but please forgive us, we just really didn't understand the process. We have not been faced with this type of civics process before. The proposed standalone pole barn or private storage building garage is an accessory structure on a large parcel of land that is vacant with no home on it or a budding that will negatively affect the property values of all of the single-family homes, a budding adjacent to and/or near Zero Gas Avenue. Applicants state in their application, the structure would have no effect on the surrounding neighborhood. We disagree. It will have an effect, and that effect being negative in the following ways: changing the neighborhood character. The structure is to be a standalone, large, and of two structures compared to any other garages in the area. It will be larger than our houses. The applicant states this is a metal structure, but let's be honest, this is going to be of twenty-four hundred square foot pole barn. The structure will be sixteen times larger than the maximum allowed, which is a hundred and fifty square feet. Plans state overhang, but no dimensions are given. The building size is planned at forty by sixter, but the applicant stated on October twenty-sixth that may go up ten feet or down ten feet. Therefore, no actual size has been fully established. The roof and overhang will increase stormwater runoff drastically in a known and prone to flooding area. No calculations of the impervious structure water runoff have been provided. The site plan states no building height. There is no rendering of what it will look like. Garages are supposed to have a fifteen-foot height limit. Will the pole barn structure be higher than fifteen feet? Nothing is stated in the application. In addition, as stated in the application, it will be primarily used as a storage garage. Furthermore, the applicant states it will increase the value of their property while not affecting the value and EAV of surrounding properties. How are these assumptions derived? We strongly disagree. The structure is allowed proposes, as proposed, creates health and safety concerns, the biggest being crime. The applicant is asking for a zoning variance to construct a larger-than-normal garage that in effect is a storage facility that will likely attract criminal activity in our quiet neighborhood, especially when word gets out that there are valuables in this structure that will create human interests, particular to the juveniles and their friends in the neighborhood and beyond.
Ma'am, I'd like to request that, with six pages, that we aren't going to have enough time with public participation to read this. So I, all of the aldermen have this in front of them. Is there, could you kind of summarize all of the things that, that you have? I, with the headlines, we could see your concerns, health and safety, disturbance to quality of life. If we could kind of possibly summarize that, and then if all the aldermen in between, when we were having discussions, if you get an opportunity, try to get opportunity, and I'm wondering if there's any way we could, could put off the vote until after, towards the end, and recess? If we could recess for a few minutes when the vote comes up, so you can read it before the vote? I think that would be important.
Sure. Lastly, we are not astute to this process. All we want is to keep our quiet, peaceful neighborhood with school-aged children intact and without any encroachment of something that will no doubt affect values of our property and our daily living. The property is an A-one zoning district in a single-family residential district. Our leaders should be focused on enticing that type of development. We just want to keep our neighborhood the way that it has been and keep the, um, character and the homeliness that we've all enjoyed intact without a big structure that would be bringing in some...
Well, I commend you on the work that you have done here. It has taken a lot of time and a lot of effort. So we will give a few minutes of recess before we vote on this, so the aldermen all have opportunities to finish reading the rest of it. I so appreciate all the work and effort you have all put into this.
Thank you.
It's very important. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. Would it be appropriate if I provide Mr. Wagner with a copy so he could see the concerns?
If you would present, excuse me, could you repeat?
Would I be able to provide a copy to Mr. Wagner?
Yes, I think that would be very gracious of you. Thank you so much. Okay. Stuart, come forward, please. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll, I'll get you right after Stuart.
Stuart Leonard, South Twenty-Ninth Street. This is something I'm gonna, this'll be all done in two minutes, three minutes max. I call it East Washington Affair. There was a bunch of people blocking the street, and they accused me of trying to run them down. But the thing that irks me is, there was two front-page articles in the News Democrat saying that I got out of my truck and was using the N-word, and I also said I got a gun and I'm gonna start shooting yous. This stuff is absolutely a hundred percent untrue. I'll get that, that's right off the bat, totally untrue. It's in the news. It was twice, two front-page articles in the News Democrat. Now, after the murder of my neighbor, I made three calls to the police dispatch, but I never said anything about blowing up half of Belleville like they made out. I was put on million-dollar bond and spent five weeks in county jail and had seven hundred and forty dollars stolen from me while there. And I was kicked in the chest and had a fractured sternum. I almost fell backwards down about twenty steps, but somebody behind me kept me from falling. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Uh, next, sir?
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is Rashid Ayadi, and I reside actually at ten forty North Second Street.
Can you step up closer to the microphone, please?
My name is Rashid Ayadi, and my address is ten forty North Second Street, Belleville. And I'm here actually to plead my case for the, like, the small location, fifty-one to twelve, North Belt West, for a small retail place. And, yeah, the only, it is actually a location vacant next to my restaurant, which is New York Fish and Chicken. And, yeah, I've been waiting for a few years to get this place to basically have more growth for my business and get more traffic in my restaurant. And the things I'm gonna sell in this place, if it works out, milk, cheese, eggs, bread, war, juice, maybe candy, chips, canned food. And if anybody has concern, which is a lot of, quite few people ask me if I'm gonna sell liquor or maybe cigarettes, I will not sell actually alcohol or cigarettes. And the, like, for the safety, the landlord basically did a good job. I mean, there is camera each corner, so there is actually at least two corners, like on the east side, like for the parking lot, there is actually two or three camera, actually focusing on North Belt. And there is actually two or three camera on the west side and two camera on the south side. So we're good on that. And for, actually, as for actually the neighborhood, I've been there actually on the restaurant, New York Fish and Chicken, running the place for ten years now in December, and I haven't had any, any problem with anybody else. Actually, they enjoy the food. I mean, I still over there. And I, basically, they come in in quite often, so I have no issue with that. So if anybody has any question, so... And, like, for, like, inside the store, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have ADT, and just to make sure basically it's safe or camera for everybody to shop around. If actually I don't get the place, most likely there will be a barber shop. And barber shop means actually I'm gonna lose business. Like about between ten and fifteen percent, like last time, actually there was a barber shop.
Okay, well, thank you so much in coming to, to present your information tonight, and we will be voting on this this evening. Thank you so much again for coming. We certainly appreciate it, the input. Okay, any more? Yes, Mr. Hagberg?
Michael Hagberg. I'm gonna comment on the Goss Ave project. Just a few things that I noticed in getting some information on it. The zoning board was issued some documents saying that the property is currently zoned as commercial. It is not. It is zoned as single-family. So there's conflicting parts where it states at the top that it's A-one, single-family, but then it says current zoning is said heavy commercial. So they were misinformed on that. There was another on the applicant. It was asked whether or not it is compatible with the comprehensive plan. And he answered yes. Building a forty-by-sixty-foot pole barn in a residential neighborhood on a lot which is labeled "single-family" is not compatible with the comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan, which is just being finalized at this time, to cost, I believe, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that plan is to put together a plan to designate areas as single-family neighborhoods. And you want a bunch of single-family homes. The other comments that I heard was, "We don't let this guy do anything with his property." Well, in the past, he wanted to put up a great big multifamily apartment complex. Again, it's a single-family area. So having a great big apartment complex is not compatible with the plans for that neighborhood. And lastly, if he does want to do something with the property, there is nothing stopping him from taking that one point seven acres, dividing it into eight single-family lots, which will keep the same zoning and have eight single-family homes built in that neighborhood. So nobody is stopping him from using the property as designated when he purchased it for the use that that zoning in that neighborhood deserves. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hagberg. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Wagner?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. It's a pleasure to address you. I wanted to set a few things straight for the record. There's been some misrepresentations due this evening. I do not own the property yet at Zero Gas Avenue. I have it under contract, and my contract is contingent upon this council approving my special use permit. If the council doesn't, doesn't grant that, I will not buy this property and I will build my structure someplace else, more than likely, not in Belleville. I live at four twelve Four Seasons Drive. I've lived in Belleville all my life. My family has made tremendous investments in this community, and we've been committed to growing Belleville for my entire life and my family's entire life. My daughter bought a house at seven twelve Union Boulevard. I can tell you that I know that this is going to improve the property value because I know what my daughter paid for her house, and I know what my bid is for this building, and it's more. It's more. It's a one point seven acre parcel. This is gonna take up a very small percentage of that parcel. The rest of it's going to be remaining green space, which I think if we get to the core of the discussion here is really what people are concerned about. The people who actually reached out to me, I made my number available to all of the neighbors. The people who reached out to me that had concerns had been walking their dogs on it or had been using it for their kids to play on. I'm not, I don't intend on preventing any of those things from happening. This is simply a location for us to put a metal structure. It's gonna be insulated. It's gonna be climate-controlled. It's gonna be a very nice building. It's gonna be up-kept in, in a top-notch manner. There was also a proposal that was made at the last city council meeting about building on an alternate part of the property. I didn't get the luxury of seeing what was presented to the council, but I believe what was presented to you was a buildable space that actually is property that I do not have under contract. It's a separate lot that is owned by someone else that I believe is going to come and propose a single-family home on it. My property will stop at a low point in the property. If I moved it away from where my proposed building site was on the plans that we submitted to the planning commission, we would be in a low area where water does collect. As far as the concerns, as far as setbacks, building requirements, all those things, our intention would be to be within any requirements that the city would have for those requirements. All we're asking is for a special use from the, uh, from the, or from the code allowing for the construction of the metal building itself. So I would ask for you guys to vote yes, please, on eleven B three and eleven B four. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Anyone else? Yes?
Hello, my name is Dave Shaneborn from Lincoln Theater, and most importantly, this time of year, Abe's Gourmet Popcorn in downtown Belleville. I'd like to again thank the city officials and the council for supporting small businesses in, in Belleville. Especially this time of year, everything makes a big difference. Along those lines, a few weeks ago, Alderman Elmore brought to our attention the proposal to remove the parking meters in downtown and replace them simply with parking limits. From somebody who walks downtown a lot, I've personally had to call in several parking meters because they were in dangerous condition, leaving sharp edges exposed, things like that. I don't see them as benefiting anymore, and from all the businesses I talked to downtown, we support this. I know talking to somebody, though, the, the time limit is important during the day. We want to allow people time to shop and eat especially, but there are office buildings, the courthouse, things like that, which attract visitors for much longer times, that you don't want to take up those valuable spaces of people, you know, coming downtown for entertainment or, or shopping or restaurants. So the time limits are important. But in general, we all support, everyone I've talked to does support the traffic committee's suggestion on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more public participation this evening? Yes?
Hello, my name is Kathleen Naidoo. I'm a resident of two oh three Aben Street. And I just want to say I really commend Bill Enyard for his effort to keep our neighborhoods safe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more public participation this evening? Yes?
How you doing? My name's Jim Ingalagi. I live at seven three eight Union Avenue. Lived in Belleville all my life. Actually, my father and his father have been there forever, too. So, uh, we built, my dad built and started Home Bright, Own Geisa Roofing. So as well as, you know, Mr. Wagner, I've been around here, too, and we've built many houses. I come from a big family of carpenters. I come from a big family of carpenters, so I just wanna state that, that what he is saying, where we proposed for him to build that was on his property. There's a huge flat area up there. Then there's pine trees. Then there's an open area there that's part of the bishops or the people who own the bishops. Then there's another lot there where another house is supposed to get built. So I just wanted to clarify that to make sure we are accurate. If it was built up there, I mean, we don't want it on there at all. But if it is to be built, it's blocked by two sides. There's a drainage ditch right there where the water can run off to the drainage ditch, which eliminates the water from going down to the lower part of the field where we have the issues. So that's all I need to say. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your participation. Anyone else for public participation? Okay, hearing none, we will close public participation. And I will come down to read a proclamation about Small Business Saturday.
Whereas the city of Belleville celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas...
According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty-three million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent ninety-nine point seven percent of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for sixty-two point seven percent of net new jobs created since nineteen ninety-five. And small businesses employ forty-six point four percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas sixty-eight cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in the local community. And every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional forty-eight cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas seventy-two percent of consumers reported that Small Business Saturday twenty twenty-two made them want to shop and dine at small independently owned retailers and restaurants all year long. And whereas the city of Belleville, Illinois supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore I, Patty Gregory, Mayor of the city of Belleville, do hereby proclaim November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, a Small Business Saturday in Belleville. And urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants in our Small Business Saturdays and throughout the year. In witness whereof, I here unto set my hand and cause the corporate seal of the city of Belleville to be affixed this twentieth day of November in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you all so very much. Okay. We will now have the approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the city council minutes, November sixth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you so much. Uh, any discussion? Yes, Mr. Ovian.
Correction on minutes. It's what I said, that there were no people there who objected when Mr. Wagner made his presentation. There were four people that were, I went back and I looked at, uh, the information. And I just wanted to make that correction. I was, I misspoke.
Okay.
So I made a mistake and I can own up to it.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Ovian. Anyone else have any more discussion? Okay, for approval of the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, claims, payrolls and dispersments. I need a motion to approve claims and dispersments in the amount of two million, seven hundred thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and nineteen cents and payroll in the amount of nine hundred ninety-eight dollars, three hundred and six, nine hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Shaffer, so move.
Kara, second.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Eris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff. Aye. Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you so much. And tonight we have no reports. So we will start with oral, yes?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend tonight's agenda and move eleven Cs action items ahead of the other items on tonight's agenda.
Okay. Okay, and would you say what?
Eleven C, one, two and three, the.
We're moving the board of police and fire.
Oh, oh, two, do that first.
I'd like to move those first so we can take care of all.
I'll second.
I'll second.
We got it first, Kara second it, so I just need a, all in favor, mayor.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so we will start with eleven C, the motions from Board of Fire and Police Commissioner.
And the mayor can read them together?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. This is a motion to approve the hire of Jeremy Rosenthal as a probationary police officer. It's a lateral hire effective Monday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-three at twelve oh one A M. Eleven C two, motion to approve the promotion of engineer Brian Mahoney and engineer Matthew Preston to the rank of captain effective Tuesday, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three at twelve oh one A M. Motion C three, motion to approve the promotion of firefighter Doug Kramer and firefighter Brian Rika to the rank of engineer effective Tuesday, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three at twelve oh one A M.
Eris, so moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's roll call.
Schneider.
Yes.
Duco.
Aye.
Eris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steel.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you, Stephanie, do you want, do you wanna introduce them? Okay.
Long time no see.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. Uh, I just wanted the opportunity to introduce you to these gentlemen that are getting promoted this evening. To the rank of engineer, we have Doug Kramer and Brian Rika. Kramer has been on, or engineer Kramer has been on the department for thirteen years and Brian Rika for fifteen years. To the rank of captain, we have Matthew Preston and Ryan Mahoney. Preston's been on for eleven years and Captain Mahoney has been on, I'm sorry. And Captain Preston has been on for nine years and Captain Mahoney for eleven years. So I just, uh, real quick, wanted to take an opportunity to introduce them to the council and to the mayor and to all of you, so. Congratulations.
You wanna do the recess now? Mayor, they want you to do recess now, real quick.
Okay, we will take a brief recess right now, just so you can, can read through uh, what you have been given from the neighborhood.
I call in, yeah, for five, five minutes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Yep, you can stop it.
We are ready now. So we'll start with oral reports from standing committees, special committees, and any other oral reports from the elected officials or staff. So a motion from administration. Uh, Jenny, would you please read it?
Eleven A one, motion to approve and accept the revised request for proposal agreement contract for one twenty-three, one twenty-seven Muscota Avenue with Avenue Realty Associates LLC, closing date on or before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Kara, so move.
Randall, second.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a question. I have a question for, uh, the city attorney. In the public comments portion, it was indicated there was material breach in the contract previously. Could you speak to that? Where are we on this? Is there a breach? Was there a breach? Do we know? Perhaps Director Cross can assist us with this.
Yes, uh, uh, Director Cross can fill in the timeline. But the reason this motion is on here is because the closing date, as extended by your last action, has passed without closing.
Correct.
Um, as far as materiality, you know, the contract does include a standard provision that time is of the essence in this contract, which would make the failure to close in a timely fashion material.
Right.
But, uh, so at this point, what is before the council is whether or not you want to extend the closing date to a date in the future like you did the last time. Uh, and thereby, what you would do is you would, you would waive that breach, amend the contract and cure that breach. And so your options are, uh, uh, if you voted to approve, then it would extend the, uh, closing date to December thirty-first. If, if you voted to deny, then it would effectively terminate the contract by virtue of its own terms.
Yeah, there's really nothing else I can add to that. I mean, uh, if you recall, this came through the R F P process. You reviewed it, you originally approved in an original agreement. I believe Ms. Mordini signed the original agreement back in July. I think it was July twenty-seventh. I think that original closing deadline was September twenty-second. And we went through the process of the special use permits pertaining to the liquor license and the events in, or, I mean, the outdoor dining, which then we brought back a new agreement where the deadline, I believe, was, was it November or October? I think it was October twenty-second or twentieth. And then we brought this one back to you to line it up with the table agenda item in reference to the special use permit with the liquor license and the event space. But there was an original agreement that was signed by Avenue Development and Ms. Mordini for the original deadline of September twenty-second.
Yes, Mr. Elmore?
So in any form or fashion, does this, by approving this revised request for proposal agreement, the only thing apart about this is the date? It has nothing to do with the layout of the property? Has nothing to do with any of that? This vote is just for moving the date and that's all?
Well, this vote also incorporates the new name that Ms. Mordini requested.
The new name and the date of the closing?
Yes.
It is not a vote on what the property is going to look like?
It, it, the concept of the R F P that was presented is still the same. It's just a change in the date of the closing to line it up. If you choose to approve the special use permit for the outdoor dining and the liquor license, it lines it up with that. And then it also incorporates the new name that Ms. Mordini has requested.
Yes, Ms. Steel?
I don't understand how the original one was signed by her in July and then now this one is totally different.
The original one was signed and contained a closing date that passed.
Right.
And then it was proposed that, and approved by the council to extend that closing date. Uh, I think it was last month. It, it wasn't, apparently it wasn't signed, so therefore obviously it wasn't closed. So the request now is to extend that date again to December thirty-first. And your options are either to approve it and then it would have to be signed and then closed by December thirty-first. Or if you deny it, then it's, the closing date has passed. It's effectively terminates the contract.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Elmore?
And is there earnest money attached to this contract offer?
There, there is not, because if you remember, the formula used a, a credit system, so to speak, to generate the down payment of cost or whatever she would pay for the building. So in a sense, um, the cost to purchase the building at the time of closing is required. So there was no earnest money attached to it.
Yes, Ms. Eris?
Yeah, Cliff, am I right in, in thinking that the reason that it, that it wasn't signed this past time was because, um, Ms. Mordini was not going to sign it until the liquor license was approved for the outdoor?
She had indicated that she wanted to make sure she had the S U Ps in place prior to signing the formal agreement.
So that if we, uh, so that the, uh, extending this, this date gives, gives that time for that to go through?
Well, she was trying to line it up.
Right.
She wanted it in place.
Okay. I'm just making sure. That's why it wasn't signed.
Okay, any more discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none? Uh, we'll do a roll call. Duco.
Aye.
Eris.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
No.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
No.
Dillman.
No.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steel.
No.
Rothweiler.
No.
Elmore.
No.
Wygant.
No.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff?
No.
Whitaker?
No.
Schneider?
No.
I have six ayes, ten noes. The motion is to deny.
Okay, motion to deny. Okay. The eleven B?
Yeah, it didn't pass. Did not pass.
Okay. Now, eleven B, do we go ahead with this? Since now then, it's been a brief.
So, uh, eleven B, you would still have to vote on because there's a pending application for special use permit under one sixty-two point five one nine action by council. Without, the council shall act on every request for a special use permit, et cetera. Without further public hearing, the council may approve or disapprove of special use permit by an ordinance passed by simple majority vote of all members then holding office. And so, um, you can indicate a motion related to this that would be consistent with your, the action that you just took, of course. And then from there, if, um, if the, because the, uh, zoning board had approved it, if you, uh, vote against that, then it'll have to come back by virtue of the section with an ordinance at the next meeting, which we've done customarily.
Yes.
With, uh, applications that were denied.
Yeah, you actually have two of them on there tonight. You're the same type of person.
Correct.
So I would suggest that you, that you handle those as agreed. Are there two on there related to?
We have two ordinances, only one, um, the ordinance, the liquor, um, license had already been approved, but there was a name change, so we were bringing it back to change the name.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so those two ordinances.
And then I was referencing the two ordinances with the liquor license and the event center that you upheld the decision of the Z B A last.
Right, for the outdoor, outdoor space.
Correct. Well, but I'm talking the two others where you, uh, upheld the decision.
Oh, yeah, for the other zoning board cases, correct.
And I think what Garrett was talking about is we bring back an official ordinance to vote on recommending or identifying the denial.
Correct.
Formal denial.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so Jenny, would you like to read?
Yep. Eleven B one forty, September twenty-three, Avenue Development, request for a special use permit for outdoor dining seating at one twenty-three, one twenty-seven, Mascuta Avenue, zero eight two two zero three four seven zero two seven zero two eight, located in a C two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the city and zoning code one one eight point zero one, one six two point four zero zero, one six two point two four eight, one six two point five one five, Ward six. Zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval in the name of the applicant only, and the installation of a required six-foot privacy fence around the outdoor dining seating area with a vote of six to zero. Council tabled ten sixteen, two thousand and twenty-three, amendment of name to Avenue Realty Associates, LLC.
Okay, I need a motion? A motion towards the?
Make a motion to deny?
To the vote, or?
I mean.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a little discussion with Mayor, fellow council members. Back in October, I moved the table, the request for outdoor dining, in the hopes of addressing the concerns of the residents who were immediately impacted by that particular motion. We met with the applicant to discuss some issues, hours of operation, et cetera, and I took those, what I thought were possible remedies to their concerns back to the residents. And those, they raised other issues that were beyond just the hours and the fence and some other things that were there. This is an issue that all the persons, Steel and myself, spent a great deal of time on. And as a result of that, you know, we tried to go back and talk with them about that. They raised some issues that I had thought of previously. I also wanted to mention why, you know, we're focused on saying no in this particular case. First of all, we listened to the residents. This council has, in the past, listened to residents who've said, for example, in South Illinois, with Dollar General wanting to go in and find a residential neighborhood, we said no. And we said, it's not right for the neighborhood. So, it goes to the character of the neighborhood that's here. This outdoor event space, I'm not opposed to the indoor space, let me be clear on that. The indoor space, the indoor event center, we approved, we approved the liquor license for the indoor, I'm not opposed to that. The issue here is outside. And the character of the neighborhood would be changed by having that. You would have anywhere from thirty to, say, sixty to a hundred people there, late at night, ten-thirty, eleven, et cetera. And I don't know about you, but, you know, there may be noise outside, et cetera, people coming and going, that type of thing. That will change that neighborhood. That is not how that neighborhood is today. Secondly, they have to live there. We listen to what people say because they have to live there. They have to put up with it, and they have to deal with it. Contrary to belief, however, to some of the folks that object to this, I do not live in the orchards, it's a great place to live, but I don't live there. And they ask, well, do you want something like that next to you in the orchards? Well, I do live next to the wine garden, and I have heard the wine garden booming until eleven o'clock at night, you're allowed to do that, you're permitted to do that, et cetera. Do I like it? No. Is it reasonable? I suppose we approved it, et cetera. But would I want that every night going on? No. Is this going to go on every night? I don't know. Maybe, maybe not, who knows? Secondly, the thing is, we talked about being near you and having this right up against you. This is a street. This is right across the street. This isn't where I'm at, or it's way over on the other side of the highway. This is right next door to you. And as a result of that, I think it would negatively impact the neighborhood significantly to do that. I had hoped that discussing it with the developer would have assuaged those concerns that they had, but it hasn't. As a result, I have to listen to the residents, that's what we do here. So, that's why I'm recommending we vote no on this particular, the outdoor portion. Again, I was for the indoor portion, but the outdoor portion of it, I just don't think that's something we should do in that location, considering the neighborhood, considering where it's at.
Okay, any more discussion?
I just wanted to say that Alderman, Rothwiler and I have spent an awful lot of time on this, and I agree with everything he just said. We are here to represent our constituents, and it's a very large ward, goes from South Illinois all the way down to the wine garden. And the area that we're talking about isn't just Aben Street, it's the entire radius, Lincoln, Washington, East Main, Aben, Mascuta. It just takes in an entire area, and that would be a totally different makeup there to have anything outside.
Okay, any more discussion?
Can we make it clear?
Yes.
Vote no, it's voting no on the?
Correct, the motion is to deny. So, if you vote aye, you are denying it.
And it's for outdoor dining, if you read the motion?
We ready for a vote?
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, let's roll call.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Rathwiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Motion carries to deny.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now move on to eleven B two.
Yep, sorry. Eleven B two forty-eight, October twenty-three, Rashida Yadi, request for a special use permit to establish and operate a convenience store at fifty-one twelve North Belt West, zero eight one eight zero two zero eight zero five four, located in a C two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point two four eight, one six two point five one five, Ward eight, Zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval with a vote of four to zero. Council vote eleven six, two thousand and twenty-three, eight to seven, no majority.
Sullivan, so move.
Schneider, second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Yes?
Mayor, I heard the gentleman speak tonight. I understand his concerns. The main concern I have with approving this, and one of the main reasons I voted no the last time, this property has little to no parking, as it relates to anybody that would be coming there by vehicle. And I think this is going to create a high volume of foot traffic, specifically from the attached neighborhood and from the Freedom Drive Apartments, which are located right there. Unfortunately, what is separating them is a very dark, uncontrolled train track, that my concern is of the residents crossing that to come to the convenience store. Again, because of the lack of parking and the lack of motor vehicle access to this property, so that still resonates with me as a severe concern of that particular location.
Okay, anyone else? Yes?
I was out there. The gentleman was nice enough, I got to go in the building. And if another business would go in, he would have to share his restaurant parking with this. This, it's his business, so the parking can be shared with both, it's his business. And he did give me a list of everything that he, you know, it seems like just a convenience store. And I just think it would be great because it's not going to be sitting as an open building because no other, if another business come in, they're going to have to ask to share parking with him. So, I'm for it, I think it would be a help. We would be bringing in revenue.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion?
Eric?
Yes?
You know, I've noticed that business, businesses come and go out of that building for quite a while now. As he, as Mr. Yadi stated, you know, there's only certain businesses that he can locate in that building. The last business was a popcorn store. Prior to then, everybody may remember Big Mama's, the barbecue place, and everything was all in there. Big Mama's generated quite a lot of traffic, you know. Since Mr. Yadi, he has a restaurant in there, I don't see the downside of him adding additional businesses inside of that, inside of that structure, you know. I assume that he's going to rent it to somebody if he can't use it. And then it's going to be an additional business that comes in and consequently, if he does do a barber shop, you know, being the owner of a piece of property that a barber shop is in, I can tell you that does create a lot of traffic, probably more than he's going to get by adding a convenience store inside of that structure. Most of his business is already there. Most of his clientele is already using that business. So, I don't think it's going to be that much of addition, maybe to him. Maybe the clientele that's using his restaurant will buy some of his, you know, products that he have in the convenience mall. He's not going to be selling any liquor, beer, or anything. So, it's not going to be that big a fraction, you know, to people that's not already coming through there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? Okay, hearing none. Do we want a roll call this?
Yep.
We will do a roll call?
Randall?
Aye.
Sorry. Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steel?
Aye.
Rathwiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
No.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor, fifteen to one.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move on now to eleven B three, and this is the request from Michael Wagner.
Can I read these together?
Yeah, or?
You can read the two together.
Read the two together? Okay. Eleven B three forty-nine, October twenty-three, Michael Wagner, request for a special use permit to construct a metal building exceeding one hundred and fifty square feet at Zero Goss Avenue, zero eight two eight zero one one two zero five five, located in an A one single-family residence district, applicable section of the zoning code one six two point zero nine four, one six two point five one five, Ward five. Zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval with a vote of four to zero. Council tabled eleven six, two thousand and twenty-three. Eleven B four, fifty-five, October twenty-three, Michael Wagner, request for a variance to construct a standalone personal storage building at Zero Goss Avenue, zero eight two eight zero one one two zero five five, located in an A one single-family residence district, applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point zero nine four, one six two point five one five, Ward five, Zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval with a vote of four to zero. Council tabled eleven six, two thousand and twenty-three.
Eris, so move.
Second?
Schaefer, second.
Thank you.
I have some questions for Cliff. Is it okay? Can I ask him some questions?
Yeah, as soon as she opens up discussion.
Yes, let's open up discussion and go on, shall we?
Okay. So, this building can only be used for personal use? Even after, if you would sell it, it can only be used for personal use?
Yes, and I believe I touched on that during the ZBA meeting and during the last council meeting. The original application only addressed what the ordinance allowed in terms of the special use permit, which is an allowed application to construct a metal building exceeding one hundred and fifty square feet in many of the underlying zoning districts. So, I heard it referred to earlier as an accessory. It is not an accessory because our ordinance does allow accessory metal buildings as well. So, one of the things that we felt like we needed to do, because the ordinance allowed for the application for the metal building, we felt like we needed to make sure we protected the neighborhood. We did not want the applicant to have the ability to build it, because once the building's there, it's there. And then build it and then sell it a year later, and then all of a sudden, we're fighting an auto repair garage or something to that effect. So, that's why the use variance comes into play, and that's why it's titled as a private storage building. So, it runs with the property forever. So, they can never sell that for a business. It protect, protected the integrity of the A one underlying zoning district.
Second question, can we have this building go through planning?
So, when you talk about, and this is kind of a little bit of an issue with the zoning code that really needs to be cleaned up. So, when you talk about the site plan approval process, many people get it confused. You have the site plan approval process that goes through the planning commission, and then it comes to all of you. And then you have an administrative site plan approval process that is reviewed in-house by staff. Randy Smith, Scott, you know, Fire Department, myself, we review it. It primarily refers to commercial buildings. So, therefore, this technically would not need to go in front of the planning commission because it is going through this process, and it, in a sense, is not a non-commercial building at that point. But, what I will say is, it does still go through the administrative approval process where the experts, in-house engineers, the building review folks, the utility reviews it, to make sure it's in compliance with the codes that need to be met per our adopted codes and ordinances.
Another question, can you tell me, these plots of land, why hasn't a neighborhood went in there? Why haven't houses went in there?
So, I heard a couple of things tonight, okay? So, why, you can build houses there, what's consistent with the A one district? And I heard a comment about, well, this was a C one district, we could have had a typo in the staff report, it happens. That's why we double down with presentations and talk about it. But, quite honestly, this neighborhood has not developed because they were not required to do the improvements associated with the standard subdivision process. When you look at this lot, this is actually ten lots, I believe, that come off Goss Avenue. I think Zero Goss Avenue tells the story because you've never been able to address it, because they, a lot of them don't have street access because the roadway's never been improved all the way down to the very end. It's only improved to a certain point on Goss Avenue, and many of them have access, many of the homeowners on each side have access through their alleyway through the back, which is where an address would not have been signed. So, short answer is, it's never been improved to be a, ten billable lots, is what I'm saying, because it doesn't have the roadway that goes in front of most of them to the back. That's why this one is primarily the front point off of A Thav, and probably why they've never improved on any of those vacant lots in the donut hole, so to speak, in the middle of those two alleys.
Any more discussion?
Oh, real quick, we're not going through a comprehensive.
We are not.
I just want to make that clear. We're going through an economic development.
We are not a comprehensive plan, except for a rewrite in twenty-four. Traditionally, I would have come in and done that first, but as an economic development committee, we talked about the need to put a focus on the ED strategy and use our funding that we had available to do it. What we're writing right now is an economic development strategy, which identifies corridor areas of redevelopment associated with economic development. It does not dictate future land use or anything like that, like a comprehensive plan. So, we are not working on a comprehensive plan.
Okay, Rafi?
I understand that the go-kart situation there is one where they do race the carts, all right? And I'm concerned about noise levels. Because we ran into that, Johnny and I did, and Mitt moved out and this gentleman moved in to work on classic vehicles, and it darn near destroyed the neighborhood and gave both of us a headache that we'll never forget.
Now, that's a nuisance issue and a noise issue, but that's relevant to all underlying zoning districts. You can have neighborhoods where the guy has his home occupational lawnmower business who's torquing it up every night at seven o'clock. I'm not saying it's perfect, I'm just saying, what we've done from a zoning standpoint is built in what we could for these applications to protect the neighborhood in terms of the use. Now, I can't guarantee, I'll be honest, I can't guarantee that the applicant is going to violate any nuisance things. I can, but unfortunately, that's kind of one of those things, you can't address it until the nuisance violation takes place. So, we built in the protections that we felt like we could, based on an application that per the current code, he was allowed to make.
Okay, good, I have a clarification. It was my understanding that this is totally storage, and maybe I misunderstood what Mr. Ovian said, but I don't believe there's any actual racing that's going to be going on in this property area.
No.
That's what I wanted to clarify, because that was what I understood from what Mr. Raf, Mr. Ovian has said.
Definitely not going to be racing out in the lot, okay?
Right.
Now, look, it's like any other private. Now, look, it's like any other private accessory building. You know, you still, sometimes people may do something that we need to address from a nuisance standpoint. But that's, that's anything with any, any policing thing. If he violates the nuisance provisions of the code, then he's going to get a visit by the police department and things like that.
Okay.
I was not bringing up the fact that he's going to race it there on the property. I understand the son basically races the vehicle, the go-kart up at the University of Illinois. Wherever it's at, doesn't necessarily have to be there. What I'm concerned about with noise level is when you're working on a high-level engine that may make a lot of noise when you're gunning it. That's what happened at Mittens Garage when they opened up the doors and people in the neighborhood listened to that noise all night, all day.
Well, the one thing is though, so it goes back to the nuisance issue. The one thing about the use variance is if there is clear violations of those nuisance provisions of the code, we do have the ability to follow the process backwards, so to speak, and request to revoke that use variance. And then if it's revoked, then he's operating illegally with anything within that building. So we've got a little extra protection to ensure that. But like I said, it's like anything. I mean, it just, you gotta watch it from the standpoint, lease it as it comes.
There are wonders right now that we have a certain level of decibels that cannot be exceeded.
Yeah, and I, it's, I've, I've, I've worked at various communities as a code guy where there are decibel levels based on, and it regulates what time you can work on construction, things like, I don't know that off the top of my head. But quite honestly, that's something that you have to measure if they're violated and then address it from a nuisance standpoint.
Okay, I believe Mr. Wiegand has some discussion.
I think there is an ordinance that allow an order at a certain time of night.
Absolutely, and it's like that even if you have a home, you're having a party every night, they come and get you, and you're violating it. And then you get one, two, three nuisances, then you, it kind of ties into the entirety of working through the police with a crime-free housing.
I, I wonder if Mr. Ice Can't could, could tell us what the decibels are since he deals with decibels downtown Belleville.
Yeah, it's covered under the Illinois EPA. So there's different decibels at different times of day. And they can go from a category A property to a category B property, just depending on. So if it goes from a residential to commercial or residential to residential, there's different readings. Most of them around sixty-four decibels that can be emitted from a property. It's much lower after ten P M. That's usually the standard timeframe. But there is an Illinois EPA law that's enforced by us. We do have decibel readers. And yeah, that can be enforced if the, if the neighbors complain that there was activity on that property that was too loud, like tuning up a race car, he could be in violation.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, hearing done. Let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Yeah, we're on a roll. All right. Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian? Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rathwiler?
No.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiegand?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
No.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to the board, a motion from Board of Fire and Police Commission. We actually have already done that, so we will move on even more. So this is motion from Finance. Alder Person Whitaker?
Any objection to doing them as a group?
No.
On behalf of the Finance Committee under eleven D one, a motion to approve workers' compensation and property and liability insurance withdrawal with I C R M T as recommended by our broker. Eleven D two, motion to waive formal bidding procedures and purchase six new twenty twenty-four Ford F two fifty pickup trucks from Broadway Ford in the amount of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars for the Public Works Department matching the Illinois State bid price. Eleven D three, a motion to approve bank financing with Clayton Holdings LLC at four point seven seven percent interest to finance new automated sanitation truck. And eleven D four, motion to approve bank financing with Clayton Holdings LLC at four point seven seven percent interest to finance the new ladder fire truck. So moved.
Eris, second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing done. Roll call?
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rathwiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiegand?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion from Traffic, Mr. Elmore?
Eleven D one, motion to remove the remaining parking meters in the city and switch to a two-hour time limit Monday through Friday, nine AM to five PM, parking on Main Street between Sixth and Oak and from Lincoln to B Street. That is the motion.
Eris, second.
And...
Can you read them both?
Well, I just want to make sure there's discussion, explanation.
Okay, any discussion?
We...
Yes. Lilian?
I voted no on it in traffic, but I'm not against removing the traffic meters. I was under the understanding that the new way things are being done, we would know all the information when it would be given to us. My concern was how many meters? Well, at first it thought there was only sixty meters. Well, there's five hundred meters. And one of my questions is, at one of the parking lots, there's reserved parking spots. Will these people get to keep their reserved parking spots? Since we didn't, I went by the name that was on the signs, which is chassis, and I have been told it's not chassis no longer. In the ten-hour lot, are they going to make a, are we going to have a large lot where there's ten hours of parking that we have where there is a sign bar with the meters? And the main concern is the cost involved in it. And where was the location of all these meters? Nobody knew at the meeting. So, I mean, I think it's great. We're going to get rid of them because everybody says, do I have to put a quarter in? I tell them no because meters don't work, and a lot of them, the tops are broke off. There's, some of the lots have no signs and no meters at all. But not to know how many meters we were dealing with, I think we should have been informed.
Okay, Brian?
Maybe can Director Poole speak to what it's going to take for the street department, the process to remove these and, and take care of them? And further discuss, further discuss the, these, the lots that fall within this area?
Can I make one comment first, Jason, just to your point of the signs? If it says it's reserved for chassis or if it's reserved, I believe, Cass Gasky Engineering in the building, those are part of development agreements. Those, that's why that signage is there. That has absolutely no bearing on the meters.
So they'll get to keep their...
Correct. That is all part of development agreements that we have pre-approved that says they're allowed so many spots and we've marked them.
Well, nobody knew any information about this and...
Well, nobody asked me. I don't know. I don't know. So they're, they're approved?
This was in traffic.
I get that, yeah. And I'm just clarifying for you, that those are, that signage is pre-approved by development agreement.
I mean, and then who's going to enforce it? And they said, well, we'll worry about that bridge, cross that bridge when we come to it. As far as the employees and the business owners parking down there, how is this going to be enforced so they don't park there all day and that?
Okay, let's listen to what Jason has to say.
Okay, so I believe your question was, what is the street department going to do? How are we going to address it? What we'll have to do is we're going to have to cut the holes off, grind them flush, fill the holes with concrete. That's the best method I can figure to how we're going to get rid of them. That's what we do currently. Whenever one gets damaged, we're asked to remove it. That's exactly what we do. How long it's going to take, I don't have any idea, to be honest, with how long it's going to take. Don't expect it to grow overnight, I can tell you that much. We will get to it as soon as we can. As far as why wasn't the information at the traffic meeting, nobody asked me how to count the meters. Just assume we were going to remove all of them. Somebody asked me how many we'd get rid of, all of them is the answer. I don't know what else.
And Jason?
I don't know what other questions you have, I'm sorry.
So it seems to me that you're going to be doing these, the removals, in phases and that the parking lots would probably be the last phase.
Yeah, we'll start on the streets, correct. Then we'll start, you know, there's a ten-day cooling period here for the ordinance, so we won't start right away. There's ten days, what do you have to wait until we can start anything?
Okay, any more discussion? Yes?
The parking passes, we didn't bring up because it wasn't part of the discussion. The, you could still go to James' office and get a parking pass.
So the, the parking lots that require, that you can purchase a parking pass is actually done through the police department that is still available, and the parking lots themselves with the time and the parking passes, that is something that needs to be addressed, but that will be addressed later. That doesn't, does not have to coincide with the parking meter removal.
Okay, any more questions?
So just understanding the, the lots themselves for a future discussion?
Correct. That is a future discussion, and I know that Lieutenant Thomason has already brought it up, and it is a discussion, but it's not something that needs to coincide with the parking meters.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, that's...
The lots that have meters in them, the meters will be removed, and that will become a two-hour parking lot.
Yes.
Yes, those will become two-hour parking lots if they're not already marked, right?
But they're, but they will be the final procedure.
On them. Most, every parking lot, if you go to a parking lot that doesn't have a meter right now, for instance, the ones behind Tavern, I believe it's a eight-hour parking. There's the ones that we actually have other meters. It's a two-hour parking. So if you, we already have times on all of our parking lots. If you drive through them, you will see signage that says that.
If there's meters, there's times.
Yeah, there's still signs there. So yeah, so that time is not changing. Again, that's going to be a separate, separate discussion that we need to deal with as far as the time.
I think right now we're dealing with basically what's on the street. Am I correct, Jason?
The motion that come from traffic is to remove all of the parking meters. That includes the parking meters that are in the parking lots as well.
But right now, I mean, it's not what we're voting on, but this is, that's going to be phase one, the streets.
No, it's all the same.
They're all being removed.
But at different phases, at different times, not all.
But you're going to start with the streets.
We're going to start with the streets.
Yes, thanks for explaining that for me. Yes, Carmen?
Are they losing any money by taking them out?
We've been losing money over the last several, several years. We have not made the money that we used to. I think Jason could probably address that.
In twenty-three, we've collected about three thousand dollars. The police department can probably speak better than this. Twenty-three, it was three thousand approximately. Twenty-two was forty-eight hundred, twenty-one was eighty-two twenty-five. Twenty-twenty was fourteen thousand twenty-eight. And I'll let those guys speak too.
And with five hundred meters, and our, our police department would have to, to look at those all day long. That's quite a few, a big responsibility for our police to be checking five hundred meters, I mean five hundred.
And not to mention, we can't find parks to fix them. They're, they're about as inoperable and out of date as you could possibly get.
I think the vintage market may want them.
I know, maybe we can sell them.
Parts of them were actually purchased through vintageparkingmeter.com.
Okay, any more discussion? Dennis?
The police department handles that, Dennis. The police department handles that.
The community service.
We don't have a meter department, but the CSOs handle that.
Community service officers.
Your CSOs collect, collect the money out of it now.
Right, so it's a lot for just, and they have bigger things to do.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing done, let's...
Let's do roll call.
Roll call.
Yep. Ovian?